Welcome. Today is June 17th, 2025. It is 5:31 and we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall. City Administrator Newbauer, could you please take the role?
Commissioners Roar.
Here.
Schoberg.
Here.
Heinchan.
Here.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have several announcements and recognitions tonight. First announcement is congratulations to Madison Surmac on being a new homeowner as of this afternoon. And another announcement, congratulations to my daughter on her 35th birthday, Danny Freilich Miller. Now we will have the quarterly work anniversary recognition and Amy Berger, our Head of HR, will come up here.
Hello, good evening. It's exciting to see such a full room with everyone. We get to introduce or congratulate for work anniversaries and then new hires. So, an exciting night for us. We have 11 employees who have reached milestones ranging from three to 40 years tonight. So, an incredible range across departments and years of service. We're grateful for their dedication, their hard work, and everything they do to help make the city a better place. Before we call those that are in attendance, we do want to recognize a couple that couldn't be here tonight. So, those would be Hamila Khalifa with the Police Department, three years of service. Jody Jangula, Administrative Assistant with Public Works, three years of service. And James Velavich, Public Works Crew Leader with the Street Department. He also has three years of service, or, excuse me, he has 15 years of service. Lastly, 20 years of service, David Gross at our wastewater plant Operator One. So now for those that are here, we will call your name and ask that you come forward. Mayor Freilich will give you the certificate to congratulate you and we'd ask that you would stay up front until we're done so we can take a picture. So with that, we will start. We have three employees that are at three years of service and the first one is Carissa Tagle, Senior Real Property Appraiser Technician in our Assessing Department. Next, we have Jayden Coontz, Utility Operator One with our Public Works Department. And Shauna Marion, Community Engagement Coordinator with our Library. Okay, we have two employees that have reached 10 years of service. The first one is Michael Bride, our Police Sergeant with the Police Department. And then Cole Anderson, our part-time fire. We have one at 15 years of employment and that is Commissioner Roar. And lastly, we have one employee that has 40 years of service with the City of Mandan and that is a major accomplishment and very amazing to call that name. So, Dane Fries with the Water Treatment Department.
Okay, now we will have the introduction of the new employees and we will have department heads introduce their new employees.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here with our new Admin Assistant, Ashley Newman. She joined us on June 2nd. And she is coming to us from college. She's finishing up her Bachelor's Degree in Graphic Design and Communications at Bellevue University. She will graduate in August and then she will be full-time with us. So, we're excited to have her helping with Administration, Business Development, and Communications, which means she is helping everyone.
Chief Pitts.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, we have two new firefighters we'd like to introduce. The first one is Hunter Beckert. And the second one is Matt Zannin. Did I get it right? Okay, thank you. Both firefighters have a little bit of experience. They both recently graduated from our Joint Fire Academy with the City of Bismarck, so we're excited to have them onboard for a long and prosperous career.
Welcome. Mr. O'Keefe.
Good afternoon. I got three to announce today. One of them was unable to make it last minute here, which is our new Admin Assistant, Stacy Mose. She just started December with us. And then I have, if you guys want to come up here. Have Tate Schwagler and Tony Geetzen, Equipment Operators in the Street Department. And they both have been here for between December and March?
March.
Yep. So, getting along great.
Welcome. Chief Seigler.
Mr. Mayor, how are you doing tonight?
Just good, yeah.
I've got three new employees, new police officers to introduce. We got two of them that are in the Police Academy. They just started back in June. And then we have Alexander Price, or Alex. He hails from Grand Forks. He's actually named after Alexander Ovechkin. So, he likes that. He's a big hockey fan, U&amp;D hockey fan. And then we've got Eric Corner. Eric is right here. He's at the Police Academy now. He's also a father of a daughter and he is in the National Guard. So, I love seeing military people come onto the police force. And then Etienne Herholt, or as we all call him, ET. So, he is a former Marine, just like myself. And we took him from Metro Ambulance, so he's actually an EMT. So, we've got a well-rounded police officer in the making right there, too. So, they'll graduate, those two will graduate in August, the beginning of August. So, whenever that comes up, I'll let the Commission know. And if you want to attend the graduation, you're welcome to come.
Thank you. Welcome. Barb.
I would like to introduce Jeff Christensen. He is a 19-hour building and grounds worker. And the day he retired, he came in for his interview with us. So, I think we're very lucky to have him around.
Thank you and welcome to you all. Now, we will have a recap of Buggies and Blues. Matt Shanendorf from the Mandan Progress Organization.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to come here this evening and talk about Buggies and Blues. I've had a good week of rest, so I better go back through these images and whatnot. Buggies and Blues was held on the 6th, 7th, and 8th of June. Here was the 32nd Annual Buggies and Blues. We had about 28 to 30,000 people over the three days, a lot of them on Sunday. We did a new kickoff concert on Friday with the band Shirts and Skins. It drew a pretty good crowd in for that kickoff concert. And then we had our Saturday afternoon block party and concerts as well. We had four different bands on Saturdays. So, we kind of expanded our music reach. If anyone that was at Buggies and Blues, you would have noticed that we moved the stage into the park, which did very well, allowed us to keep the streets open and traffic flowing, which allowed us to bring in a new style event from the transitioning from the Classic Car Parade to a Classic Car Cruise Night on Saturdays. So, if you were downtown Mandan on Saturday, you would have seen a lot of vehicles driving around, souped-up ones, classics, for a good couple of hours on Main Street on Saturdays. So, I'm going to just click through some of these pictures here. We had 14 different food vendors in the park for a quote-unquote "Buggies and Blues" food truck festival. You'll see the crowd there with their chairs out, listening to the music. There's Shirts and Skins. We opened up Saturday with the Moon Cats, kind of a blues grass band. And then they had another local band, Aventide, as well. And there's some of the cruise night that was happening. So, a lot of activity in Main Street and downtown Mandan over the three days. This was Pop Gun Rerun was our headliner on Saturday night. Did a fantastic job. Hailed from California, Orange County, up here, first time in North Dakota for all of them. So, we were glad to have them. And then we had the car show on Sunday, which if anyone was down there, you had to hold on to your hats because it was pretty windy. But we had about 325 vehicles that were parked on Main Street. And about, within that count, about 22,000 people that came out on Sunday for the car show. So, that was our recap. Buggies and Blues next year will be over the, I believe, the 11th, 12th, and 13th of June of 2026.
Great job, Matt. It was a lot of fun down there.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to the 4th of July, correct?
That is correct. It's two weeks away.
And we'll have you back. Okay, Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to move the agenda here for June 17th.
Second. We have motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to approval of minutes. Consider the approval of the following Board of City Commissioners meeting minutes, June 3rd, 2025, which was a regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting from June 3rd.
Second.
We have motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Approval of the June 10th, 2025 quorum pertaining to the Special Assessment District 236.
I'll make the motion to approve the June 10th, 2025 quorum, Street Improvement District 236 meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Braun. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no public hearings tonight nor bids, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Roar, seniority.
It's a tie.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And that brings us to Brendan Nagel from the Bismarck Mandan Chamber, EDC, to give us an update on their activities. Brenda?
If I can figure out how to get this back. There we go. Technology is great when you know how to use it, right? Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing the Chamber EDC to give a report of what we've had going on. To be clear, I think Mayor Freilich knows an awful lot of this information as he does sit on our Board of Directors as part of his portfolio. But we want to make sure that everybody is very much aware of what we've got going on at the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC and some things that are kind of out there for the future. And so, I'll entertain any questions afterwards, but hopefully we'll razzle-dazzle you with my update here. So, some of the things, a lot of the things that we have been doing of late are really in the name of workforce development. And some people might say, well, isn't that just a buzzword? What is that all about? If we don't have people to fill the positions that we all have open, it makes it very difficult for us to move business forward, as we say it. Economic development is incredibly important and having a workforce that is educated and ready to do whatever it is that needs to happen in the various businesses is mission critical. And so, we take that work very seriously at the Chamber EDC. Some of the things that we've been doing is working with an internship network. And so, this was a new activity last year and it really took off. And so, what we've been, what we've been working on with our economic development team is we've contacted many, many employers in Mandan and in Bismarck and asked for, who are your interns? Who's here for the summer? And what we found out last year and already this year is that the majority of the interns who come to Mandan, to Bismarck, to our communities, they are actually coming from outside of the state. Their college or university of choice has sent them here to the various businesses that we have to learn and to do their internship. The worst thing that we could do is not recognize that they are here in our community. We want them to see all of the great things that Matt Shanendorf and team in Mandan are doing. We want them to experience, what is Mandan like as a community to live in, to work in, to raise a family? And so, connecting with those interns really gives us an opportunity to show them, what about living in Mandan or Bismarck? And so, we invite, we do three events throughout the summer. We invite interns from across the work arena. Some people will send one intern, some will send as many as 15, depending on how big their organization is and what they've got going on. Again, it's a great opportunity for these young people to say, okay, I'm here for the summer and I really, really love the community. We want them to go back, graduate from their college and university, and say, I can't imagine living anywhere else. I want to go back to North Dakota. I want to go back to Mandan and I want to work at that place that I did my internship at. And so, allowing them to experience the different things. The first one that we had for the summer, you'll see here that it was scheduled for June 11th. It was the kickoff session. And we had about 50-some young people at 24/7 send it. And when you give young people free food and an opportunity to have some fun and make some connections with other people, again, interns connecting with other interns so that they can envision themselves, what would, what would this look like to live in this community? And so, we've got a couple of other events going on for the summer with that group and we're pretty pleased with the outcome. 94% that we surveyed from last year felt that they learned more and became more connected with the community through these types of events. So, we'll continue to do them. The Welcome Initiative is something that Mayor Freilich was very involved in. We were grateful for that. It was kicked off in Mandan, Bismarck. And, you know, we hear a lot of things from a lot of people that say, we're, we're North Dakota nice. But are we really? If we know people, we're pretty nice to each other. But if you're a complete stranger, have we gotten to the point where we're maybe not quite as open and friendly to folks? And so, the Welcome Initiative kicked off in May and it was an opportunity for both mayors to really encourage the communities in which they live to reach out to the new people in town. Help them understand how it, what it takes to be connected to their community. Come to these meetings. Understand what's going on at the city government level. Go to your park board meeting. Go to your school board meeting. Learn who your neighbors are. Maybe invite some people over for a backyard barbecue or invite somebody to coffee. But it really was just an opportunity for both communities to embrace all of the new workforce that is in Mandan and Bismarck. And for the two mayors to do that together, we were incredibly grateful. I don't think people understand that the collaboration between the two cities is alive and well. That wasn't always the case and we are very, very grateful for that. We have a Facebook page that we've started with the information about this Welcome Initiative and we've had nearly 20,000 visitors or views to that Facebook page. So, people are definitely interested. So, we'll be waiting for Mayor Freilich to have a backyard barbecue at his place soon.
Soon.
More to come on that. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot there, Mayor. All right. So, also, more in the name of workforce programs. Educator Experience actually kicks off next week. And Summer, who works with all of our workforce development efforts, she'll be leading that. 24 educators in, between Mandan and Bismarck will be convening together to learn more about the workforce, what is needed, what types of jobs are out there, what should they be teaching the young people that they're responsible for in their respective schools about the jobs that are available in Mandan and Bismarck? And so, they'll be taking the proverbial field trip to a lot of really great places and showing the educators what it's like to be working in these different environments so that they can take that information to their students even at a young age. We need to start connecting with the young people as early as third and fourth grade is what, is what we're being told and we hear that. And as parents, we know that our kids are being bombarded with making decisions earlier and earlier. But these 24 educators will be gaining an experience by looking at some options in engineering, architecture, healthcare, media and communications, criminal justice, and more. So, it just arms those wonderful teachers. They're already great. But if they can learn a little bit more about the jobs that are available in our community, they can help to kind of shuffle our students along in certain directions. Leadership Bismarck Mandan, just graduated in May, we will be taking applications for the next cohort. Those applications are open now. We encourage citizens in Mandan to get engaged with Leadership Bismarck Mandan. It's an incredible program that allows everyone that's in it to just get a, not just a bird's eye view, but a really up-close and personal view of what it takes to run a community, to be a part of a community, and encouraging them to be engaged. One particular project out of Leadership Bismarck Mandan called The Rewind, it's a podcast that some of the cohort have started. And they're looking and visiting with local retired individuals with the goal of learning more about the population and finding opportunities for them. More and more, we are finding that people who retire don't really retire. They're just looking for what that next thing is. And they might be moving at a slower pace, meaning they're not working a 40-hour-plus work week, but they still have plenty to give. And so, by connecting with them through these podcasts, we can understand how they can better give back to their community and continue to be a part of the community in which they live. Talent attraction is something that we're constantly doing. So, it's not only about trying to keep the young people and the existing population that we have, but how do we attract talent from outside of the state of North Dakota into the community of Mandan and Bismarck? And so, the MakeYourMarkBizMan.com website has seen nearly a 30% increase in traffic. Now, some of that has to do with that Welcome Initiative because they're seeing things going on. But we're also doing some very targeted marketing to people outside of the state of North Dakota to let them know what it is. We have great things happening here. City of Mandan has amazing things happening in Dykehorn Park on a very regular basis. And it's not just in the summertime. It's all year long. And we have great employers in this community. And we've got a very welcoming governmental process. And so, we want to make sure that people are comfortable with reaching out and finding out more information about what's going on here. We find that the top states that are interested, North Dakota for obvious reason because we've got people locally who like to check that out. But some interesting stats, there's Virginia, Minnesota, Texas, and Colorado tend to be the states that are primarily looking at what we've got going on. And then business attraction and development, kind of along that same line is how do we help the businesses that are here and the existing organizations? So, Nathan, our Vice President for Economic Development and his team members, attended EPIC, which is the Energy Progress and Innovation Conference, earlier this year. They were able to connect with over 1,000 attendees and 200 exhibitors to tell them about the community of Mandan and Bismarck and help them understand what we've got going on here. We've got very business-friendly policies and we are the place to do business. And so, those are great opportunities for us to make those connections on behalf of the community. And then Business Bootcamp is something that we'll hear more, you'll hear more about in the future, but I just want to kind of hang the teaser out there for you. Business Bootcamp is something, again, that our economic development team has really been working with. We've heard from our small business and other business people that they really need some additional support. And so, we're looking at putting together a multi-stage developmental program that's built to guide the people who are in the program through a complete process of starting a business. Some might say, well, that's easy. You just go to the Secretary of State and you get a business name and you file your papers and away you go. It doesn't quite work like that. And I think people that start a business, they realize when they're already into it that I probably should have a CPA or an accountant, or I probably should get some guidance from an attorney on how to incorporate myself. What do I need to know about employment law? What does it take? Do I need to stand in front of the City Commission and ask for a permit if I'm going to be opening up a new business? And so, really trying to help folks understand what does it take to launch a business and then how do you sustain that business? Because we as community members want to see a business start, but we almost more importantly want to see them thrive. And we want to see them in our communities for a long period of time. And so, I'm looking forward to that bootcamp and there will be more to come on that. And then just some of our marketing efforts in the first quarter of 2025, these are the avenues that we use to reach out to people without being all creepy about how we follow them around and things. But when they check in on our LinkedIn, when they like something or they share our post, that gives us the ability to do a little bit of tracking through some marketing online. And we've, you can see there, we've reached almost 97,000 different businesses and individuals through all of that, those marketing efforts. And so, no lack of reach out and connections because once we've got those connections, then we can continue to communicate with them, make sure that they're receiving the regular email updates that we're providing, which I believe all of the Commissioners are receiving as well as the administrative staff. And so, that's our update. I tried to keep it short and sweet and to the point, but we appreciate the support from the City of Mandan. We can't do this without you. And we, we welcome your comments. We can't do this without you, um, and we, we welcome your commentary, um, your questions. Um, we, we also very much so welcome your support. Lunch on the patio, um, by the way, commissioners, is July tenth, um, and so please, if you have an opportunity to come over and do some networking with some, um, businesses on our patio, we'd love to serve you some hot dogs and, um, and hamburgers. Any questions?
Thank you, Brenda. Yeah, any questions? Dennis, did you get that?
I just got.
Lunch, July tenth?
July tenth. Dennis, I know you're usually there and I appreciate seeing you there.
It's getting pretty close to twenty-five years, isn't it, with the City of Mandan with Bismarck? If I go back and to nineteen eighty-
Yeah, it is.
It was about nineteen ninety roughly when we, so we're almost entering, if we're not twenty-five years already.
Yes.
With the chamber.
Yes, and thank you for the historical, um, knowledge. Um, I, I think it's important to celebrate that. Um, it hasn't always, uh, you know, I think there's, uh, sometimes people are like, whoa, what about Mandan or what about Bismarck and how are we working together? I think the fact that the two mayors are coming together on many, many items, um, and, and that we've got, um, Mayor Fralik on our board, um, to listen and provide feedback, um, as we embark on the many things that we do, um, it, it says an awful lot about the City of Mandan, um, and the mayor's presence, um, and, and all of yours at, at many of our events. We appreciate it.
It's a work in progress.
It's definitely a work in progress, but it's been very, very positive.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions for Brenda?
Thank you, Brenda.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Okay, we will move on to item number two. Consider a Mandan Growth Fund recommendation to provide fifteen thousand dollar prize in the form of a forgivable loan for the 2025 Business Pitch Challenge. New homeowner Madison.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, there's a party at my house afterwards and Dennis, your band is playing, so. Can't wait. All right. So a little background, the goal of the Mandan Business Pitch Challenge is to support entrepreneurs who are seeking to launch or expand businesses in this community. Individuals with an early stage or recently established business are encouraged to apply. A selection committee composed of professionals from the Mandan area reviews all applications and selects four finalists. Finalists are evaluated by the selection committee based on the range of criteria, including, but not limited to, research, innovativeness, market fit, impact on Mandan, scalability and planned use of their prize money. Finalists who advance past the selection committee phase spend about two months refining their business plans and preparing their final presentations. On pitch night, a panel of judges evaluates the finalists using the criteria, criteria I just have mentioned, as well as the following. Presentation delivery, which is the clarity, logic and effectiveness of the presentation, including the use of visuals. Q and A performance, the ability to answer questions with clarity, depth and expertise, and bankability. This is ultimately whether the concept is bankable or investable. Would you approve a loan for the business? Would you invest your own money into it? The current funding structure and proposed changes we have. In the past, only the Business Pitch Challenge winner was eligible to receive a forgivable loan from the Mandan Growth Fund. That was ten thousand dollars if the winner's business was open and operable in a commercial location in Mandan or the surrounding ten-mile radius in Morton County. Or five thousand dollars if the winner's business was open and operable in a residential property area in Mandan or ten-mile radius in Morton County. The Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC, in collaboration with the City of Mandan Business Development Department, have proposed increasing the total available growth fund award to fifteen thousand dollars to allow for a broader supportive entrepreneurial efforts. The first place winner would still receive the same ten thousand dollars or five thousand, but the second place winner would receive three thousand dollars and now the third place winner would now receive two thousand dollars. The fact of this, we believe that the additional amount will either A, promote prize equity by recognizing multiple high-performing businesses, not just the first place winner, and B, adjust the Mandan Business Pitch Challenge award structure to better reflect inflation since the program's inception about a decade ago. So the recommendation of the Mandan Growth Fund, um, they voted seven oh, two absent to recommend providing a total of fifteen thousand dollars to be split as allows. The first place winner would have received ten thousand dollars, the second place winner would receive three thousand dollars and the third place winner would receive two thousand dollars, all in the form of forgivable loan for the 2025 Business Pitch Challenge. And with us tonight, we have Nathan Schneider here and he is also, he was the starter of this whole program, so he's the ancient one that couldn't tell you all about it. If you have any questions, you can try to answer them.
Any questions for Madison or Nathan? Put Nathan on the spot.
Yeah.
If none, what are your wishes, commissioners?
I'll move to recommend providing a total of fifteen thousand dollars to be split as follows. First place winner would receive ten thousand dollars, second place winner would receive three thousand dollars and the third place winner would receive two thousand dollars, all in the form of a forgivable loan for the 2025 Business Pitch Challenge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Fralik.
Yes, motion passes. Item number three, thank you, Madison. Item number three, consider requests for thirty-five thousand in matching funds for the Mandan Art Alley Project. Mr. Dubauer.
Mayor Fralik and Commissioners, it is quite interesting that I get to present this to you tonight because I have about as much artistic talent in my little finger as nonexistent is about it. So, um, on behalf of the Mandan Visitors Committee, the, um, the request is for thirty-five thousand dollars to complete the Mandan Heritage Art Alley Project. This project aims to transform an underutilized downtown alleyway into a vibrant public space featuring large-scale murals. An initiative will enhance the visual appeal of the downtown Mandan and promote cultural tourism and support the community engagement through public art. So this project actually was before you on February eighteenth of 2025, which included the acceptance of a thirty-five thousand dollar Northern Plains National Heritage Area, um, grant and a five thousand dollar contribution from the Fort Abraham Lincoln Foundation. I believe the call for artists was quite successful and we had not planned on bringing a request to the Visitors Fund at that point in time, but due to the large interest in the, the artists that were, um, engaged with, uh, transforming this project and also submitting projects to, uh, the committee, I think the, the ask came in that we would like to do phase one and phase two altogether and therefore the request for thirty-five thousand dollars from the Visitors Committee. I know that Aaron Barth is here. If you have questions for him regarding this project, um, former planner Andrew Stromi was instrumental in getting this moving along too, and I think he was part of the judging committee, um, that did some of the artist selections. So again, due to the success for the call of artists, they're looking to do phase one and phase two yet this summer. So if you have any questions for me, but again, I will invite Aaron up to tell you more about this project.
Okay, Aaron, you got visuals?
I, I do not have visuals, uh, right now, but, or Jim, do we have any on?
And here's where I'm going. I just want, uh, everybody to see what, what it's possibly going to look like.
Oh, sure. Let's see, maybe Jim has. Are those visible to everybody? Okay. Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for having me here this evening. Um, let's see if I can operate this mouse too. Okay. So, some recap to, uh, the Mandan Art Alley, phase one and phase two, uh, we're asking or requesting here, putting this before, uh, we put it before the Mandan Visitors Fund and, or Visitors Committee and here we are before the Mandan City Commission. The funds already secured before, uh, the ask is presented before you is fifty-two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. And to give a bit of an orientation, uh, of what art, what alley we're talking about is the, whoops, had a hard-boiled eggs there. My mouse is sliding around here, sorry. Well, well, uh, it's what, the east-west streets are, uh, First Street Northwest and Main Street and the north-south streets would be First and Second Avenue Northwest. So that would be phase one of the Art Alley and I believe phase two may go beyond that, um, which would be the request before you. So yeah, a big broad brush stroke, the funds already secured are fifty-two thousand nine hundred fifty. The ask would, here tonight would be for thirty-five thousand, so that would bring it up to, who has a calculator, right? Uh, eighty, it's eighty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty, yeah. It's a historian trying to do math here, so I can get in the general vicinity, right? Um, with, before the, uh, commission asks before you, there'll be already five murals that are a go. Um, and the background on the project as Jim provided, we had a big, uh, sort of formally informal meeting on May ninth of 2024. There's over thirty attendees from the business community. I believe Commissioner, I saw Commissioner Heinchan who was at that, that meeting as well, is great. Um, and then that same evening, uh, the Mandan Progress Organization, Matt Shenador is there as well. He rolled out, uh, Facebook posts and, you know, blew up seventy-four likes and eight shares. I've got a whole bunch of different data. I just kind of went down, uh, Facebook memory lane to see what the waypoints were at this. Mayor, you had asked to just see the visuals potentially of what the-
How many, how many artists are going to be involved in this?
Yeah, if approved, there'll be fourteen artists that'll be involved in this. Um, the highlight that you see before you indicates either a Mandan resident or they have studio space in Mandan. Um, the other artists are, uh, over in the City of Bismarck and surrounding area as well. Um, I'll scroll down here as well. So in the artists, so the, there's themes that were created for the call for artists and the themes aligned along, um, I've got this on my phone, that's what I'm looking at, my notes on my phone here. Um, the five different themes are honoring indigenous traditions and contemporary expressions. Uh, the second theme is waves of immigration and cultural convergence. The third one was land, water and community. The fourth one was shared histories and contemporary connections and the fifth one was a future sort of look at youth innovation and cultural continuity. Um, the leadership committee members, so the, the trained artists that were reviewing the proposals that the artists submitted, uh, included Travis Albers, a local educator and basketball coach, Rebecca Engelmann, she's a retired North Dakota Council on the Arts Education Director and Grand Administrator, Andrea Fagerstrom, who is a BSc Professor of Art, a trained artist and practicing artist, Molly McLean, who is also a artist, a practicing artist and administrator, Kayla Schmidt with the Morton Mandan Public Library Outreach and Program Coordinator, Prairie Rose Seminole is a filmmaker, researcher and writer and a tribal citizen of the MHA Nation, uh, Andrew Stromi, City Mandan Planner, and Tobias Sigmund, who is also a North Dakota Council of the Arts across the Prairie Engagement and Practicing Artists. So had a good review team to, to sift through all the artists and they are the ones who, through a rubric ranked the art submissions. So you see the artists with six votes, Nicole Gagnor, Paul Newt and a local women team and also Andrea Falcon. And you can get an idea of, these are representative samples of either the artists that have already, uh, completed a work of art that won't, that's not what will be in the Art Alley, but, uh, a representative sample. And then there's, uh, paragraphs on the side, uh, giving the general outline of, uh, for example, Nicole Gagnor, uh, she would like to reference important cultural foods and folk art traditions in the area, including native foods, uh, farmed and foraged, seeds saved, brought by immigrants, uh, beading, quilting and embroidery. Um, a lot of the detail is, is included in the agenda packet. This is the same detail that was sent out for the agenda packet too. Paul Newt, um, he's also, uh, he's done that iconic North Dakota painted map with all the counties and the, gotta have a bison if we have the northern plains, right? Um, and then here's the local women team of April, Melanie and Shauna. And they have, uh, a nod to indigenous women who have always been the backbone of our communities and have played a crucial role in the conservation and transmission of ancestral traditional knowledge. Um, so their mural would serve as a tool for storytelling, preserving traditions, establishing pathways towards healing and creating connections between past and present. Uh, here's Andrea Falcon. Um, she would like to do a native North Dakota plant life, um, and the women who have shaped the state's history. Um, and then scrolling down further, we have artists with five votes, so Melissa Gordon and she has a mural idea sketch that is a nod to the, the eighteen eighty-three rail bridge and, uh, past and present locomotives. Uh, Victoria, uh, Lebchenko, who, uh, lives in, she does live in Mandan, um, and she has a portraits of unspoken truth. Um, and mural will be a celebration of cultural identity, quiet strength and human dignity. And I believe Victoria just was invited to do a showing over at a, uh, art exhibit in France. Um, not Paris, Texas, but Paris, France, right? Uh, Linda Roche, um, she has her idea sketch. You see a Western metal arc there. Emily Murphy, uh, her idea is Prairie Landscape with a Wide Open Blue North Dakota Sky. Danielle here, um, another large-scale, uh, landscape mural. And then we get to the artists with four votes. And so, uh, her, they, uh, Linay and Maddie say, we would love to illustrate this amazing story of how North Dakota settled through images of a beautiful steam train as a centerpiece, as well as tracks through a North Dakota landscape with references to German, Dutch and Norwegian settlers. Here's Liz White. Uh, bra, so Liz's vision of the mural centers around the idea of a braid as a connecting feature between cultures and heritage. Braids have been used in hairstyles by people throughout history and across vastly different cultures. And artists with three votes here. So Jessica Wachter, she does have her studio in Mandan. Uh, Jessica Wachter does those very large-scale, uh, paintings on canvas. Uh, she wants the mural to be a vibrant tribute to the place she calls home, a reflection of the spirit of resilience and stories of this community. There's Crystal Tretbar. Uh, tie-in with a star quilt, uh, within, informed by the Star Quilts of the MHA Nation. Elizabeth Fuhr, uh, capture the light, shadows, trees and layers of a view driving south on Highway six in a vibrant and abstract way. And then, uh, yet to be, uh, maybe this will be phase three, uh, Richard Lowen. And, uh, there's still, still have him back and forth with Richard Lowen, but the fourteen prior that you see there would be mobilized in this, with the funding, if, if accepted and approved, uh, by the Mandan Visitors Committee and the, before you hear the Mandan City Commission. Hopefully that provided a good overview, Mayor.
Yes, so why should we approve this? What's the significance of it? Uh, this artwork in connection with other cities across North Dakota?
Right, yeah. No, that's a good question. Thank you for the prompt, uh, the question prompt, Mayor and Commissioners, and, uh, this is, you know, this is something that we're seeing pop up not only in the urban communities with these public murals, you know, just to reference, uh, the City of Bismarck did their Art Alley in 2015, but we're seeing this pushed out more and more into the rural as well. Uh, several artists in this cohort here have helped murals, uh, throughout North Dakota. One was last summer was in Grafton, North Dakota. If you see their Carnegie, Historic Carnegie Library, there's a big beautiful mural there. But to get to the underpinning of your question here, the philosophical why, Mayor, is, uh, there, there's numerous things. These murals, they express the values of a community. Uh, they do, uh, form an expression of pride, of community, of place. Um, during this committee, we had people say things like, well, Rapid City has a cool art, you know, Art Alley that people go and travel to and visit to, you know? I don't know the exact footprint of the square mile radius of the range of people that come there, but we're up here, people are referencing Rapid City, so it's, uh, I'd say it's, you know, just another one of those places that people are going to identify as a spot to come to, to view the murals, right? And, uh, you've, may have seen in the Bismarck Tribune this morning, uh, the Bismarck Expressway Tunnel mural was finished. I've had a chance to be at that, uh, onsite- I've had a chance to be at that, uh, onsite, helping with materials. Uh, I don't want to get anywhere near painting, I'm with Jim on that. Um, but I can tell you that, uh, people, when they enter the tunnel, or when they exit the tunnel, are far happier than when they enter the tunnel. And it's because of that, that art, right? Um, we have yet to develop a, a sort of a barometer or mass spectrometer to see how much more spending people, you know, people increase in spending, uh, but, uh, I can just broad brushstrokes say that when people are happier, uh, they do tend to want to part with, with funds, right? Uh, spend money in your, in your town, that sort of thing. So, it does have that economic impact as well.
So we've got a artistic, uh, expression of our culture.
Mm-hmm.
Um, possible tourist attraction.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're gonna spend, um, eighty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars, um, in an alley.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we gonna see graffiti?
Yeah, that's another really good question, and, uh, I always appreciate that question because it's, it's a natural sort of, well, if we paint beautiful art, how is it protected, right? And there's, there's two different, uh, things to touch on with that. The first is that, uh, well, these murals will be painted by local artists, and there will be another mural, uh, one of the murals within this larger mural will be one of the community murals as well. And by that, uh, they'll have a process by which community members will be invited to paint that mural. This is going somewhere, too. They'll be invited to paint that mural and thereby have ownership of that mural once it's installed. So we did this on the Missouri River Heritage mural, which is on the I-94 Bridge. Um, and there's hundreds of people that painted that one. Uh, the Expressway Tunnel mural, there is seven hundred and eighty, or six hundred and eighty-eight people that helped paint that mural. And so they, what they've seen over twenty-plus years, this process has been developed, grew out of Philadelphia to help, uh, clean up blighted neighborhoods and that sort of thing. And they found that when community members actually paint the mural and the mural goes up, they become defenders of that mural, right? Uh, they, they have ownership of it. The second component is very easy to understand, technical, it's, uh, there's a couple coats of, uh, anti-graffiti paint that gets, uh, clear-coated over it, and it's called, uh, "The Stuff Works So Good," they, they call it "The Stuff Works," TSW. So, uh, we have a, a team that knows how to apply that, think you put it on the three-mill spec, uh, three-mills, and then it dries, and we will help, we will be the maintainers of the mural, too, when, if in the unfortunate, something happens where it does get tagged or something, yeah.
Okay, and the average life of these murals?
They're seen twenty years, uh, of these murals, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for Aaron?
Mayor, Aaron, uh, you know, we do have murals, and you can go, I think there's three or four businesses, you know, the Eagle, and our places in Mandan, that do have murals up to this point in time. Which, uh, businesses, I'm trying to place my mind, because it's been a while since we've seen...
Yeah.
A graphic of this. Which business would be budding these murals right now?
Right, down the alleyway, there, the couple that come to mine is, be one on the, Jim, help me, help me, too, uh, Big Stick Cigar Lounge, I believe, and then, uh, the business just in the north, which is, is that Vicki, Vicki's?
Remediation Building.
The remediation building as well, and we did, uh, reach out and get signatures of, uh, building owner approvals as well, that they're comfortable doing this. There's a couple other business owners that said they really love this idea, but they're gonna wait to see, they wanna wait to see it happen, and they want to be involved in the subsequent phases as well, so, um, yeah.
What about preparation of the surfaces? I mean...
Right.
There's some pretty rough spots down there.
Yes, yes.
I know. Is there gonna be something done to, uh, make these a good canvas, so to speak?
Right, yeah. No, that's a great quest, question, Commissioner Rohr. And some of the surfaces, you're right, they're, they're, uh, the texture of them will either have to find a, an inert solid material like plywood or something and, and mount it on it. We have, uh, uh, technical ability to do that. Uh, other surfaces, this historic brick, we've done this before as well, where it's pressure washed and you put a couple coats of masonry, good masonry primer on there, and that, that's your surface as well. So, we're absolutely, uh, taking that into account, too.
Yeah, 'cause in my mind, uh, I consider the, uh, you know, some of those areas downtown and the business alleys that are just rough-looking and I have you at, to where they take on a whole new view, a new atmosphere, and that's conducive to these paintings and stuff like that, they, uh, when you're all done, they don't look like a, uh, the rough alley that was before.
Right, yeah. We're, we're trying to make it a little less, or a lot less Mad Max sort of Fury Road feeling, and more of like, "Hey, I wanna be here," right? So, exactly.
I want them to look like Brooklyn's northern's boxcars that come through town.
Traveling murals, right, yeah.
Okay, so if approved, when would they start?
Uh, yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the team is ready to go, so...
Okay, they're standing outside.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, um, important to note that the Mandan, the Visitors Funds, um, are to be spent only on visitor attractions to town, so they can't be spent on roads or sidewalks or curbs and things like that, so, one of the qualifications there, um, there are adequate funds in there, um, to support this project. The, um, Visitors Committee, when they met last week, voted four to zero, um, with one individual absent, in support of recommending that this, uh, request be honored.
Mayor Jim, has the Beautification Committee here making recommendations for that as well, or are they not involved?
Um, I'm trying to remember, but I think this has been discussed at the Beautification Committee. I don't, I think the, the folks that were selecting the artists were not a part of the Beautification Committee, but I think they're fully supportive. I could probably say with great certainty that they would support, um, this project, as Aaron indicated. Um, a lot of this, it, it's not, um, you or I walking down with a gallon of paint and painting on the side of the building. These folks know what they're doing, they've done it before, they know what kind of paint to use, they know how to prep the surface, and they know what will last, and they also know, um, if, if there is graffiti on the, the artist's work, how to get it off. And I think we've heard time and time again that, um, if you put public art up, the, up, the chances of it being vandalized are slim, because artists don't like to wreck other artists' stuff, to be honest. And it's, you may consider graffiti artists as graffiti artists, but they don't want to wreck other people's things, so usually that's a way to kind of clean things up and, and keep them prominent and keep them looking good.
And there's, you're, there's good support from the business community, I presume the chamber for this type of thing and others that would, uh, promote and support this type of project?
Mayor Freilich and, and Commissioner Rohr, as Aaron indicated, it was, what, May of twenty twenty-four, I think, when there was a, a, a meeting held, and a lot of it was about creating a downtown entertainment district. And this is one of the ideas that came, um, from that meeting, and, you know, nothing moves very quickly in government, and this is, this is originally brought up in May of twenty-four, we're in June of twenty twenty-five. That's moving pretty quick for a project of this nature. So again, um, it, they, it has been supported, um, we would, um, our remediation building that is down in one of the alleyways will be the focus of a couple of the, uh, murals that will go on that, too.
Okay.
Okay. Jim, um, having spent a lifetime in, in public safety, I, I think this needs to be addressed as well, because the, the, the greater, uh, the traffic, um, the greater the destination draw, um, maybe some more lighting or whatever that will come in time, I, I think the, uh, the issues with, uh, people perceiving alleys as, uh, ugly places to perpetrate criminal activity will diminish. Uh, having lived in, in, in the near north side of Chicago, um, alleys were a favorite spot of, of ours in, in the, in the block. In Chicago, they called them gangways. Uh, and I, I see only good things coming out of this. Uh, Chief Ziegler, I don't know if you've had any experience with this from where you used to practice law, uh, enforcement in Florida, but, um, from this seat's perspective, this is only going to, uh, enhance the safety of our downtown area, enhance walkability, and garner more citizen support for our downtown businesses.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Schoburg, I certainly agree with you, and, you know, you touched on lighting, and that was another one of the items that was brought up at this meeting, is, um, you know, clean the alleys up and, and let's work on some additional lighting in there, too, so, which also helps deter some of the nefarious activities that may go on.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Mandan Visitors Committee recommendations. Four to zero with one absent for the authorization of up to thirty-five thousand dollars for the Mandan Art Alley project. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Mr. Neubauer. Now, we will move on to item number four, consider applying for the Department of Homeland Security Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. Chief Bits.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, as you mentioned, uh, we're requesting this evening to apply for a SAFER grant, uh, through Department of Homeland Security. Um, this SAFER grant is specifically designed to help departments increase or maintain their number of trained and frontline firefighters available. Um, this will allow us to bolster our staffing levels in response to increasing service demands within the city. The current grant cycle, um, offers funding for salary and benefits over a three-year period, and we're, we view this as an excellent opportunity to address our personnel needs without placing an immediate financial burden on our, uh, current residents. We've worked with our finance department and our administration, and at this time, we're recommending that we make application for six firefighters. Um, this hiring would be in alignment with our strategic planning efforts that we're undergoing as a city and as a fire department. Excuse me. If awarded, we feel that we do have some options, uh, and some long-term funding tools that we could, uh, adjust to sustain this hiring, at least on our, uh, five-to-ten-year horizon that we've been working on, so, um, in short, the grant is structured, um, the first two years, year one and two, federal government pays seventy-five percent of the firefighter salary and benefits, and then year three, um, the federal government pays thirty-five percent, and then the balance is on their, um, local share. So, the grant deadline, we have to make app, it's very quick, it just opened up, uh, last, about two weeks ago, and the grant opened up, and it's, grant submissions are due by July third, so it's a quick turnaround on this one. And then we would expect to know, um, by the end of September whether or not we're successful. Uh, the total project to hire six firefighters, um, for three years is about one-point-seven million dollars. Uh, Mandan's cost of that would be just under seven-hundred thousand dollars, and the federal portion would be, uh, just under a million dollars. So it'd be a million dollars of, uh, federal money that would be applied for this. And so currently, we have eighteen line, uh, shift firefighters, and if successful with this grant, it would bring us up to twenty-four shift firefighters, which would allow us to staff both Station One and Station Two with three firefighters, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Kind of threw a lot of information at you, and my throat's crackling on me, so I'll take a break and, uh, answer any questions you may have at this time.
Mayor Chief Bits, the, uh, just so I understand, the, the way the grant works as well, you, you get the firefighter, let's say you hire, you know, the six firefighters, and you have them, then you get reimbursed over a three-year period, then at the end of the third year, then the city would have to pick up full cost, correct?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Rohr, that is correct, at the end of the three years.
Okay, then, but then, as time goes on, what happens then if, let's say, uh, certain deficiencies come about or things, and you still have to keep them on for a certain amount of time, no matter what? Is that a one-year requirement after that?
Mayor, uh, Freilich, Commissioner Rohr, I am looking through our documents real quick, I'd have to double-check on that, but I don't know that there's a commitment beyond the three years.
It's like the COFs grant, I think, Chief, uh, you, I think you're, there's requirement, and it'd be very similar, I'm sure that, that you, you gotta keep them on, I mean, you just can't wait to three years, "Okay, thank you, and goodbye." I think you have to keep them on for at least one year after the expiration of the grant, if I'm, if I remember correctly, anyway. Is that right, Chief, Ziegler? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
I, Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Rohr, I'll double-check and I'll circle back with you on that.
I'm relatively sure on it, but, uh, just for a point of information, anyway.
Mayor and Chief Bits, if we apply for six, is there a chance we only get awarded for three?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Heinchan, that's possible. Um, we, it's been a few years since we've applied for this, uh, specific grant, so I'm not exactly sure, um, what the structure is, uh, but it's very possible, yes.
Mayor Chief Bits, I think it's important to understand that, um, our community is, is, is growing quickly every year, uh, thanks to the input of, uh, the, um, construct, construction industry, uh, realty industry, so on and so forth. Um, rapidly growing to the southeast and rapidly growing to the northwest. Um, currently, if memory serves me right, um, several of our, our notable, um, structure fires, uh, First Engine Inn had two firefighters. Am I correct or wrong on that? The Fifteenth Street and, and, uh, the, the current, or re, recent, uh, fatality fire southeast.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoburg, you're correct. Uh, currently, Station One and Station Two are both staffed with a minimum of, uh, two firefighters at Station Two, and a minimum of three firefighters with our recent two hires that, uh, were introduced this evening. We're now able to go to three firefighters minimum at Station One ninety percent of the time. There are rare exceptions where we do drop to two firefighters at each station still, so, um, these, this, this hiring process is critical to ensure that we do have at least three firefighters on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week at both fire stations.
So to paint the picture, for those who are watching, First Engine Company has two, two, uh, firefighters. One of those firefighters runs the pump and has to stay there. Second firefighter runs a hose line. One firefighter does not take a hose line inside the house, is that correct?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoburg, uh, that's correct, and, and so the, the standard is, is there should be two in, two out. Um, if you send two firefighters in, there should be two firefighters on the outside of the structure with equal or greater, uh, resources available to him or her to, uh, initiate rescue of those firefighters if the, if the need arises. That's correct.
And we still have to take into account sick leave and, and vacation leave.
That's correct.
So I see no option but to approve this. Any more discussion? If not, I would entertain a, uh, motion.
I'll move to allow staff to apply for the DHS SAFER grant to hire six additional firefighters.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoburg, second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioners Schoburg.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number five. Consider a development agreement for the shores at Lakewood Second Edition. Mr. Neubauer.
Mayor and Commissioners, um, this is a request to come before the commission by developer Art Goldhammer, and, uh, we have been working on a development agreement for, uh, quite a while. Numerous discussions with the developer, we've just reached points where we have, uh, maybe reached an impasse with the developer and are looking for some direction from the commission. The points would be, uh, one, approve the development agreement issuing directions on any unresolved items, authorize immediate plat recording for shores Lakewood Second, uh, direct staff to proceed with bid and financing preparations, and allow staff and legal counsel to finalize the language whereby consensus exists without delaying essential next steps. There seems to be, uh, roughly about, I think, four main points of contention in the development agreement. Um, those being, one, the special assessment period for the above-ground infrastructure. Uh, developer has requested that we, um, finance it over a twenty-five-year period, and in general, we do fifteen-year assessments for streets that are in asphalt. We will go up to twenty years on streets that are in, um, concrete condition. Uh, developers indicated there are a few communities in North Dakota that are assessing over twenty-five years of Fargo and West Fargo. and we believe that to be true. We also know that there are issues with stacking assessments. We don't like to get into putting assessments on a street that are brand-new and coming back in, you know, seven to eight to nine to ten years doing a chip seal, which we may need to do. That would be okay, but if we have to do a reconstruct after fifteen or twenty years, when that original street is not yet paid for and doing another assessment on top of that original assessment, we, you know, generally try our best not to do that. And that's what the problem that we see with financing a fifteen, a asphalt street over a fifteen-year, over a twenty-five-year period. Pardon me. We also have an issue with future lift station upgrade. We believe that as this development is built out, need for a larger pump in one of our existing lift stations. I believe that cost to be about seventy-five thousand dollars. And we're asking the developer to upfront that amount. Developer has resisted that. We've, we would offer maybe an option, or a couple of different options would be, one, at times, we have done a, kind of like put in a financial interest instrument with the city of Mandan and the developer as cosigners, such as a CD held at a local bank. When that seventy-five thousand dollar pump is need to be replaced or upgraded, we would then have those discussions with the developer to release that money in which to pay for that upgrade. Again, this is an upgrade that is being caused by that development and the additional services that are provided. Another option might be when shores two, three, and four would be completed, that a twenty-five thousand dollar payment be made with each of those. When, when two is done, we, or started, we do a twenty-five thousand dollar payment. When three is started, we do a twenty-five thousand dollar payment. And when four is started, we do a twenty-five thousand dollar payment. The developer is asked, or is requesting that we, that as lots are sold in this area, that we would be able to special assess the cost of that upgrade to the pump. We think that over two to three to four hundred lots that may be developed in shores two, three, and four, that the administrative costs of putting a couple hundred dollars on a special assessment would not be worth doing. And that's why we're resisting that, because we think it'd be easier, because this development is, again, creating the need for that additional flow. Additional flow translates into a larger pump that's needed during the build-out. Another area of contention would be the, there is a full lift station that is needed in the development. We are asking that that be funded as part of the underground infrastructure by the developer. Developer is asking that we special assess the cost of that. In general, again, lift stations are normally funded by the benefiting properties. In this case, we feel that there is one owner of all the property that this lift station would benefit, and therefore, we would ask that this lift station be funded upfront by the developer or as it is completed, and then not special assessed to the benefiting property. So, I think those are the three to four. We've got three real big issues. We've got another issue with a grass area, which I think we can, or a grass collection site, which we think we can certainly work out as we move through the process. But, in essence, we are looking for direction from the commission on these items. With that direction, then we'd be prepared to fully move forward on completing the rest of that development agreement with city attorney Oster's help and the developer's help. So, I know developer Goldhammer is here. If you have any questions for him, or if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for city administrator Newbauer? I agree, Jim, that we do not, on an asphalt road, want to go past fifteen years. That's just, I don't think that's good business. Any questions?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Arthur Goldhammer with TRX Developers. Thanks for having me and entertaining this, and thanks to staff too for working through this. I know it's been pretty complicated, and, you know, ultimately, we're here just trying to get the project to work as best as it can for the city, for, for us and for future residents. I heard testimony earlier about economic development and firefighters to pay for and other things of that nature. And, you know, some of you may have seen in the packet and the information that was sent to you that, you know, our shores development, you know, will roughly add about two and a half million dollars annually in tax revenue, which is pretty significant. You know, as a developer, we're also a home builder, and we have quite a bit of experience selling homes in the area. And one of the biggest constraints that really helps, or actually keeps people away from homeownership is the special assessments. As interest rates rise, monthly payments rise, special assessments are a big deal to people. Whether the developer pays for it on a three-way agreement, or it's a city special assessment, it's still a cost that needs to be dealt with. You know, in our research, we were trying to find ways that, how can we make this more palatable for our future residents and to attract more owners to the city of Mandan? And, you know, we looked at our experience in West Fargo and Fargo, and like, well, you know, what are those differences? What is driving that growth? The comment made by stacking special assessments, I largely agree with that. It's not a wise idea. However, in my research, you know, it did come up with Colliers, who's, I think, the city of Mandan has worked with, their municipal bond advisor. You know, there is provisions in the century code, I believe, that allow that maintenance period or maintenance fund to be included in an initial special assessment district. When you look at the development costs of a street project, agree that there's got to be some maintenance to the asphalt, the curb and gutter, the subgrade, the storm sewer, the streetlights. Most of the infrastructure definitely has a longer life cycle than, you know, seven to ten years. We believe that with a maintenance reserve fund baked into the initial special assessment district, that would prevent the stacking of special assessments in the future while those maintenance items are, are handled and funded without the need to cause another special assessment district in the future on top of one that's currently existing. Our numbers, that would save homeowners about twenty-two hundred dollars a month on a forty thousand dollar assessment, or annually. I'm sorry, that's quite a bit of money when it comes to, you know, you've got your house payment and your, all your household expenses, and it could be really significant in helping more people achieve homeownership and being more attractive of Mandan than Bismarck. I know it's setting somewhat of a precedence, but I feel like it's been proven in the state, and it's a viable solution. Aside from that, I, I guess, regarding the upgrading pumps on Fortieth, I, I think we could be palatable to spreading that seventy-five thousand dollars out over the three phases. I think that'd be a great step for us, and I wouldn't have an issue with that. It's, I think, probably through some of our later amendments to this agreement that some of the items worked themselves out with corrections we made after meeting with city staff the last time, which I'm glad to hear. So, thanks again, everybody, for, for that. The aerialistation, that's one we just had to ask for. I kind of figured that'd be a no-go, and that it would likely be requested to stay on the three-way agreement with the water sewer project. You know, we would be amenable to that, you know, if that's how, what the commission feels. Ultimately, our, our asks here, I think, are pretty light, and we've worked through most of our challenges with city staff, and, you know, have came to a pretty large consensus on, you know, most of these items. Again, we just need some city direction to staff to, how to proceed, because, again, this plat was approved last fall. You know, we've got some pretty large special assessment and tax payments annual that we got to finish a project to get out to residents that have purchased lots and people that have purchased homes in second addition that we obviously can't start until the plat's recorded. So, we ask for your guidance and leadership, and I would stand for any questions we may have.
Any questions for Art? Mr. Newbauer, could you talk on the maintenance, maintenance reserve fund and the prevalence of that within cities?
Mayor and Commissioners, again, we, it's almost like you're including the cost of a future potential special assessment, which we, right now, would not know the cost of. We won't have a bid out in order to, even to special assess something, we have to have a public bid. And we have to have that process gone through in a public award and things like that. So, I question whether we can legally do that or not, again, just because of the public bid requirements on a special assessment, and also assessing, you know, if you've got a, we're building a new street, and the assessment on that new street is twenty thousand dollars, and now we're going to add on additional money to create that maintenance fund. I, I'm not confident that that, we can do that legally.
Okay. Art?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm not an attorney, I'm not claiming to be one, but I do believe that North Dakota Century Code forty dash twenty-two dash oh-one does allow the inclusion of all improvement costs, including reserves in assessments. I wouldn't ask the city to do anything that wasn't above grade and legal, and, you know, that there wasn't a mechanism in place for. So, my ask with this would be for the direction, providing the legalities of it and function to entertain the twenty-five-year assessment.
Greg. Thank you, Art. And Art, I'm not an attorney, so we're going to have to defer to Amy.
Mayor Commissioners, neither am I, a licensed bond attorney. My understanding of the United States Treasury regulations is when you sell a bond for the improvements that that bond is for, you have approximately three years to spend those bond proceeds. And I'm not aware of anything in North Dakota Century Code that would allow you to take those bond proceeds and use them for future improvements years down the road for maintenance. Treasury gives you that three-year window to spend those original bond proceeds.
Okay. Here, I'm looking in kind of a broader context here, and, you know, sometimes there's a push-pull between residential developers. You know, the residential developer got to go in, they got to buy the land, you know, they make a big investment there. Then they got to develop it, and in some cities, the city allows for certain types of development, you know, upgrades. For example, some places may put in the lower sewer, and some places the developer has to do it. Some places the cities allow the streets, and places the developer has to do it. But there's that, that push-pull where, you know, where I think in this situation here, that the developer here says, "Okay, I'll do this here, but, you know, there's a lot of money involved in this here, so I need some, I wouldn't actually call it assistance, but, you know, some business agreements with the city to facilitate this development." And, you know, we have the, the one with the streets that have to be, be done and kept up, the lift stations, things like that. And say to the developer, "Okay, well, you know, you put your own streets in, you do your own lift station, stuff like that." And a lot of developers probably couldn't afford that. But in the same sense, you know, I think we have to be cautious as a city to how far do we go with this business relationship in allowing certain promotions to the developer in, in, you know, doing his project. You know, there's give and take both. And the developer will say, "Okay, but yeah, you, I'll put the development in, and we'll have X number of residences, but guess what, city, you're going to get X number of taxes, property taxes out of that, too." So, that's the other side of the argument that developers will have. So, I'm just looking at this whole thing, and I'm trying to wait these things out. And, and this one here, you know, we're looking at a specific case here. And I, I, I'm not in favor of the twenty-five-year thing there, and, and I'm not sure with the lift stations how far the city needs to get into putting it on for special assessments by the city and those type of things, that kind of support. So, just to my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
Mayor, I would, I, I like the Arts Agreement here with the twenty-five thousand on the future lift. I think we, to spread that out helps him a little bit. This maintenance thing, I'm a little intrigued by, because I, we've done things very well for a long time, but I, I think, looking at a potential to see if it, if it's legal and if it fits, I think we should consider taking a look at that. You know, I'll, it, there seems to be more questions here of if it is possible, so I think we should consider looking at that.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioner Heinchan, if that is the direction, we can certainly work with attorney Oster and, and more fully develop that. Like I said, right now, our opinion is we don't think we can do that. Developer says I have instances where it can be done, so we need to kind of figure out that. But the real question, I think, is also the spread over twenty-five years versus fifteen years also. I know they go, they kind of go hand-in-hand, because if you're, if you're able to build in some money on that assessment for a chip seal or a mill and overlay on, on over twenty-five years, it's, it's a little different than saying we're just, you know, I think we flat-out can't do that. And therefore, would recommend the fifteen-year assessment on, on the new construction as we, as we do for the life of that asset, rather than try and build in a maintenance fund. But, you know, we'll take the direction that you would like us to go.
This is also an HOA correct, Art? Okay. Anybody got a motion? I don't feel comfortable where we're at. I think we should continue to look at things, as Commissioner Heinchan said, but I don't feel comfortable with these three items.
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, I might offer that, in what hearing, what Mr. Goldhammer said tonight, we've got kind of two of those issues could take care of, right? The twenty-five thousand per year as shores second, third, and fourth come into play. We've also got the lift station wasn't asked, and I think the direction is, we, we know it wasn't asked, but we're, we understand that it should be part of the three-way underground development. The only issue then that would be left, although there's some other side issues with some things in agreement, but I think then the main issue would be the fifteen or twenty-five year. We could probably work on that in the next week or two, looking at attorney Oster to see what her time availability is like. I know that the developer would like this to be done as expeditiously as possible. But, again, I know that Colliers, which might be bond counsel when they sell their bonds, can look at us and say, you know, "We can write what y'all want to do, as long as it's legal." And as Greg said, if it meets the, the treasury and the bond requirements, those funds have to be spent within three years. Therefore, the idea of us going out and borrowing money, and we don't spend that money until the seventh or eighth year on a chip seal, and then spending more of that money in year fifteen as a mill and overlay, I don't know how those two marry up and are doable right now. So, if you would like us to continue to work with the developer, we can iron kind of those second and third items out, and then we, we, we work on that first item.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I know if there, if there's some reservations on part of our staff that has to deal with this all the time, I think we should reconcile that, because, you know, our expertise is rather limited in some of this. And so, if there's things that can be worked out and made more amenable for us, more understandable too, then I'd be all in favor of that.
Okay, so are you making a motion or something? What do you want to do? I need a motion.
Well, would the motion be to table this until negotiations, negotiations or further movement is made? Commissioner Rohr, Mayor Freilich, Administrator Newbauer, and
and, and, uh, Mr. Goldhammer, um, this is way above my intellectual capacity, to be brutally honest with you. So, taking it down to brass tacks, um, I guess, and, and basing on my observations in the past, almost a year now, and previously attending commission meetings back to December 1st, I've been able to see some things work out to a very amenable, uh, uh, resolution between our professional staff here, uh, Mr. Goldhammer's, uh, company, um, or, I don't think our legal team was involved before, but I com, I continue to be impressed with the professionalism exhibited by all parties. Uh, things that I've heard tonight lead me to believe that, um, Mr. Goldhammer and the city, uh, and based on what I've seen from the past, everybody wants to, uh, see the, uh, progress continue for Mr. Goldhammer's business, as long as it's compliant with state statute, um, and the advice of, of our finance director, Greg. I know this can be worked out, because I've seen you guys work it out before. Um, I, I like the professionalism. I like the street smarts. I like the honesty that I've seen here tonight, as I have seen from all parties before. I think this can be worked out. Um, therefore, I'm gonna err on the side of, um, as with Commissioner Roar, to continue working, um, the city continue to work with, uh, Mr. Goldhammer, and come to a resolution, uh, hopefully in the next two weeks. So if what we need to do then is to go with the suggested motion here in front of me on this smarter-than-Craig-computer thing here, I guess that's what we can do.
Okay.
Open for suggestions, because I'm kind of lost on this deal, to be honest with you.
No, I think we all want to move this forward, and, uh, I think it's, uh, imperative that the departments work this out with Mr. Goldhammer. So, uh, make your motion.
Okay, here we go. I'll be the good guy or the bad guy, depending on which side of that thin blue line we all are on. So the recommendation is to continue working with the developer and on finalization of the development agreement after input from the city commission, which is special assess, number one, special assessments of above-ground infrastructure will be financed over 15 years. Or do we need to add something to offer some flexibility here? I mean, maybe I'm out of, out of order. Do we need to include some flexibility in this or not, Amy?
I think the suggested motion is fine, um, and certainly I'll work also with staff on the, on the legal questions. As we sit here today, I'm not aware of anything that would allow us to do that. I'm happy to look at it. I'm also happy to look at any specific examples the developer might have. Um, but I think there is a suggested motion just to continue working with the developer, um, and then to bring it back to the commission. And I think that's sufficient unless anyone else has other thoughts.
Just continue reading what we have in front of us here?
Sure.
So to repeat, uh, number one, special assessments of above-ground infrastructure be financed over 15 years. Number two, future lift station upgrade will be funded by developer either through upfront payment. Oh, boy.
No, sorry, just to interrupt, just the motion, which, as I see it, and maybe I have an old version, is to continue working with the developer on finalization of the development agreement after input from the city commission.
Okay.
Thank, thank. Until all issues are resolved. Okay. Thank you, Amy. Uh, so I'll repeat, the recommendation is to continue working with the developer on finalization of the development agreement after input from the city commission. And right now, I'll, uh, deny, uh, everything until a resolution of this matter can be taken care of between the two parties. That sounds halfway intelligent? Sure.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg and a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yeah.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Frelick.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number six, consider increasing administrative approval for the Memorial Highway reconstruction, approval of change order nine. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, I have sort of two items on this item, two sub-items. Um, the first is the, um, request to review and possibly approve change order nine on the Memorial Highway project. This change order is related to the design of the temporary asphalt surface. Um, the current design is three inches of asphalt over four inches of aggregate base, and this would change, this change order would modify that to be four inches of asphalt over eight inches of aggregate base with GeoGrid. Um, this just offers a stronger, more predictable section, um, for the traveling public that is more likely to last the length of the project. Um, the total amount of this change order is $673,000, which is just under 2% of the project cost. Um, it was a $38 million project. Um, and it's our recommendation to approve this change order. Um, in addition to this, um, this change order is being made under what, what's being called Subproject One, and Subproject One is the main line paving of the Memorial Highway project. And that portion of the project, we have a cap from the state on, so we have no exposure to change orders made in that sub-project of the Memorial Highway project. So we're requesting, um, my signing authority to be increased from $25,000 to $100,000 specifically for change orders made in Subproject One. Um, and this would just be to make it, uh, make the department more flexible and more, um, able to react to kind of evolving situations on the project without having to, um, bring it to commission every single time. Um, those are my two, uh, recommendations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Jerick?
I don't know where I've been, but is this, is this for the portion that they're working on now? Is this for the whole Memorial Highway strip?
Um, Mayor, Commissioner Braun, yes. This would be for the, the entire, um, the entire east half of the project, as well as, um, there will be a temporary road constructed soon, and there will be another temporary road constructed in the future, so it would apply to both of those temporary roads.
Oh, so this is temp, this is not the finished product. This is just the temporary, so they can do the work.
Correct. This is just temporary.
Perfect. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve change order nine as presented. I move to increase the city engineer's signing authority of $100,000 for change orders, uh, within Subproject One of the Memorial Highway project. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Frelick.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, item number seven, consider extension of street closure for WBI Energy. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, um, WBI Energy, uh, is doing a boring project to upsize a 12-inch, uh, gas main to 16 inches just along the west side of the new high school. Um, they had, we had previously come to the commission to request, uh, a three-week and one-week, uh, road closure, um, to occur between May 27th and June 20th, I believe. Um, WBI, due to unexpected circumstances, has not been able to make those closures and make those improvements yet. So we are, um, coming back to the commission to, to request, uh, a shift of those dates to be, uh, between June 10th and July 10th. Um, everything else would be, would remain the same. They, they provided a, uh, road closure, uh, map for us, and we would, um, expect the same provisions. Um, Mike with WBI is here and available for questions, but I'd be able to answer any questions, too. It's our recommendation to, um, approve as presented.
Jerick, just for the folks at home, um, though the unforeseen circumstances are, are rain-related, and the, the construction company has lost, I'm guessing, ju, just over two weeks of construction time for that, uh, progress. Um, for the people that, uh, don't get out and about, this is an absolutely huge, huge project. I mean, they're, they're pushing line under I-94, you know, they're going north along 8th, uh, they're, they're taking this further north. Um, anybody can drive up 1806 and see the huge amount, amount of technology employed by WBI to get this thing done. Um, so, you, you lose two weeks plus due to rain, you gotta make that up somewhere. I move to approve the extension of the street closure for WBI Energy. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Commissioner Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Frelick.
Yes. Item number eight, update on various construction projects throughout the city. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, I do have a few updates to, um, present to the commission tonight. Um, first of all, Memorial Highway, uh, just as we talked about on the last item, um, the temporary roadway is expected to be completed, or to be, it started on soon and completed, hopefully, within the next week. Um, and we would expect traffic to shift after the Fourth of July. Um, the 21st street closure is still going on to install stormwater infrastructure, and the detour route along 19th is still, um, effective, in effect. Um, for our 2024 reconstruction, uh, project, the, uh, Shady Lane and East Main intersection were opened last week, uh, or was open last week, and, um, water main replacements continue in the low strata area. Uh, for the 2025 reconstruction project, or the Monty Drive project, installation of the new water main began today, um, and that started with the tie-in to the 20-inch transmission at, uh, Boundary and 6th Avenue Northwest. And then the upcoming work includes installing, uh, an upsized 24-inch line along 6th Avenue Northwest. Um, for our rapid rectangular flashing beacon project, uh, three of the four locations are active, and we do have an update meeting tomorrow afternoon, so, uh, my, my information is about a week old. Um, Custer, at the location right next to Custer Elementary was delayed, um, co, has a delay caused by an unexpected gas conflict. MDU is expecting to move that line, um, next Monday or Tuesday. At the Saint, at the St. Joe's location, everything is on track, and they are planning on pouring concrete this week. And the 2nd Avenue Northwest location, crossing Main Street, concrete is expected to be finished this week and should be finished before the Fourth of July. I checked on that specifically. Um, for our Collins Avenue Reservoir Project, the foundation fill is complete, and DN Tanks, the actual tank manufacturer, will be mobilizing in next week, and they will be working on the foundation, uh, starting after the Fourth. Um, along with this project, the site piping is complete, and we are expecting a water main tie-in to occur over the next few weeks. And during this, uh, during this tie-in, there could be, um, some low water, some periods of low water pressure, um, around the community, so people should just be aware of that. Um, I do also have an updated, let's see if this works, updated aerial for everybody to take a look at if they're interested in it. Yes. Oh. Maybe technology isn't working with us right now. It's okay, I can continue on without. Okay. Yeah. Um, and then I guess the last project that we have going on is, is our water treatment plant phase three optimization project. Um, demolition of the existing concrete around a groundwater lift station has started, and that's pretty much the only thing that has been active on that project so far. Um, if there's anything more specific, uh, that you want to know about, I can try to answer, or if not, I can find answers for you after the meeting.
Any questions? If not, thank you, Jerick.
Yes.
We'll move on to, uh, resolution and ordinances, second consideration of ordinance number 1466 and 1467 related to the management of trees and shrubs. Shane?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I, I bring second consideration changes to ordinance 1466 and ordinance 1467, which propose updates to the city amended forestry-related code provisions. The primary goal of these revision is to streamline and standardize tree and boulevard maintenance procedures. These revisions reflect current forestry practices and improve transparency and communication with residents. In, in cases where a tree or shrub poses an immediate public hazard, the city may act without prior notice, consistent with existent, existing policies. We recognize some residents may have concerns about what these changes mean personally, to be clear. These revisions are intended to clarify enforcement standards, not to expand or change the scope of enforcement. While the timeline for compliance, such as reducing the requirement from 20 days to 14 days to submit a plan or complete tree removal or trimming, has been adjusted. The purpose is to promote more timely and consistent application of existing safety standards in the city. And I will take any questions.
Any questions for Shane?
Move to approve the second consideration of ordinance numbers 1466 and 1467 as presented. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Further discussion? None. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Frelick.
Yes. There is no other business tonight. The future meeting dates for the Board of City Commission, July 1st, 2025, at 5:30; July 15th, 2025, at 5:30; August 5th, 2025, at 5:30. As always, be kind to your neighbor. It's onward and upward, Mandam, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.